Good evening, this regular meeting of the Mount Morrover Area School District Board of Education will come to order. It's seven o'clock, roll call, Danny. I see it, Diana.
Here, here.
Jeff, here, Jessica.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
And I am here, Dr. Salerno, can you certify that the meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone who can't please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Is there a volunteer to read our mission statement? Hearing none, I'll read the mission statement. The Mount Morrover Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society. Item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda, do we have any revisions to the, excuse me, do we have any revisions to the agenda? Say that five times fast. Motion to approve. Jeff has moved that the presented agenda be approved, is there a second?
Second, Diana.
Diana has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the November 2nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Diana, so moved.
Jeff has moved and Diana has seconded a motion to approve the November 2nd minutes, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the November 2nd, 2020 regular meeting minutes are approved. Item 3A, school news, Dr. Salerno.
Well, good evening, everybody, I do think I see Kate Eisler on the call tonight, good evening, Kate. How are you?
I meant to mention Kate in the, in the, in the roll call, so I'll do that next meeting for sure, Kate, sorry about that.
All good, um, hi, everyone, so the first thing that I wanted to update you all on is a final trick-or-can update. I think I saw Ms. Carol on the call, who's our amazing duck advisor, so shout out Ms. Carol. Um, this afternoon, we counted over 600 items, so I wanted to extend a huge thanks to any of you who might have donated. We are so thankful for all of you. Um, secondly, this Wednesday, there is a National Honor Society meeting, which will go over a number of different community service events for anybody who might want to be a participant in the community. Um, and thirdly, this Wednesday, actually, we have our first session for our virtual healthcare program at the high school. We have three nurses coming to speak, and we are very excited to see how that goes, thank you.
Thank you, Kate, Dr. Salerno, do you have any additional school news? That's absolutely wonderful, Kate, to have that vision come to fruition with the nurses, thank you for helping to be a part of organizing that. This, as you know, is American Education Week, that marks this being a very special week. And of course, last week was also a special commemoration of Veterans Day. You know, each year, we have a special celebration of our veterans. And this year, while we were in a pandemic, we still found a way to recognize our veterans through music and speech, and then, of course, that absolutely beautiful monument we all seen built as we come into the community off Springvale Drive. A special note of gratitude to Commanders Classy and Hartman for being a part of this year's occasion, and I'd like to thank all of our students and staff who were part of making this really a very special and memorable event. And speaking of memorable little events, we continue, those of you who are on the safety and wellness call here a few minutes ago, heard of about eight or nine really substantive efforts that are underfoot right now with regard to mental health and wellness supports, and a review of those opportunities that are on our district's website. Well, tonight, I'm pleased to announce even one more opportunity for our families. And this one has to do with a evening with Patty and Terry Cullen, many of you know that name, as they were helpful and instrumental in helping our community grieve through some significant tragedies we had, loss of lives we had now about two years ago. And they are willing to provide some additional supports and wellbeing supports to our families, they're looking to do something on Wednesday evening, December the 9th. And there'll be a bit of a survey that you'll find in my weekly board recap that will help you learn a little bit more, and hopefully, you will be available to participate in that event. Another way in which we're just trying to reach out to our families to support you all during this very difficult time of COVID. And that's what I have right now, so thank you.
Is there any other school news? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 3B, citizen comments. Those wishing to speak should please text their name, first and last, and address to 608-250-9166.
Now, we have two citizens' comments thus far, one that we received in writing there, Mr. President, and then Mrs. Molly Schmuck. Molly Schmuck, good evening, Molly.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
You sure can.
Perfect, all right. Um, I am commenting today just to kind of go over the new hybrid model, um, we just started that today, I know. So obviously, first day, you know, things are going to be different. Um, but, um, I guess that I'm just concerned about how everything went about. Um, to me, the most important thing going forward with the school year would have been able to stick with our original teacher. Um, I feel strongly that there should have been a fourth option on the survey, virtual, the hybrid, let the district choose, and then stick with current teacher regardless of their choice. I chose hybrid thinking and hoping our current teacher might be teaching that way, but unfortunately, due to circumstances in their life, they are not, which I respect 100%. Um, but I took a gamble, uh, do I want my son to be attending school and be in school in class, absolutely. Yes, I want that so much for all of the kids, this has been a very strange and hard year for everyone. But, uh, if that fourth option would have been on the survey, would I have chosen to stick with our current teacher because of that amazing bond they were already building and just that new normal we were starting to form? Yes, I would have chosen that. Um, when I told our son that he no longer had his teacher as best friend anymore in his class, he was devastated and he said he didn't want to go to school anymore. I didn't really think through how hard this would be transitioning for him, and I think selfishly, I chose thinking what I would want to do going to school, but he's in kindergarten, you know, he didn't really know any different. He was doing well with the virtual plan, and I was hoping, and, you know, fingers crossed, that his teacher would have chosen to do that too. But again, like I said, due to circumstances and for our teacher, they didn't, and again, I respect that. But, um, if we could have known what the teachers were doing, and I know, you know, if the teachers wished to share that with us, I wish that they would have been allowed to do that, just so that we could have tried to make a little bit better decision for our family to try to get them to stick with their teacher. Um, I, I don't really understand why we could have known before during the survey what the teacher was doing if they wanted to let us know. Um, at this age and the hard school year we're facing, thinking about keeping some sort of normal and familiarity for the children, I feel like that should have been a priority as well. I reached out to try to switch our son, our son back to virtual, to try to hopefully get him back in with his teacher because I didn't understand the effect it would have on him. Um, I was told I could switch him back to virtual, but there was no room left in my teacher's class. And this is before all the class lists came out. So I was pretty disappointed to hear that things couldn't be swapped around a little bit if there were parents reaching out, you know, requesting these things. I mean, our kids have been with these teachers for almost 50 days already of learning. To me, if someone was reaching out, asking if there was any kind of, you know, way to make it work a little bit better for their family, I really wish it could have been considered. And I was basically just told it couldn't happen, so we stuck with hybrid, and that's what we started today. Um, I'm hoping for the best, wishing for the best for all the families. Um, but, you know, I, I, I just really wish that the building deep positive relationships with another, which is so fundamental to the success of the school, which I know is right on the website, I feel like it wasn't really shown through the way that they went about rolling this all out. Um, and I'm certain that if we asked the majority of teachers if they would have liked that fourth option on the survey to keep their current students, if their current students wanted to stay with them, I'm pretty positive they would have said yes, I wish that would have been on the survey. So, thank you.
Thank you, the next person is Kristen Owens, Mrs. Owens.
Hi, um, I'm speaking tonight because I'm so surprised there's no agenda item to discuss the fact that teachers are still being required to work in the buildings a minimum of 20 hours a week, even if they're doing remote work. Um, I'm surprised about this because our county and our state are in crisis, right, things are bad. And the governor issued an executive order last week asking everyone to stay home whenever we possibly can, and asking employers to allow their employees to work from home whenever they possibly can. And public health officials are asking us, stay home whenever you possibly can. Um, and so I struggle to understand why the district is doing the exact opposite. And why, instead of allowing people to work from home when they can, you're requiring them to come in to do work that could have been done remotely. Um, it increases the risk for those teachers, obviously, and also for the staff that need to be in the buildings. And we have students in the buildings, so it increases the risk for those students and the families of everyone I mentioned, right? Um, this goes against everything we're being told to do right now, to help slow the spread. And we're so lucky in our district because we have just amazing teachers. They are dedicated professionals, and they have been doing a great job, no matter if it's working from home or working from their classroom. Um, I have a kindergartner and a third grader, and they often need my help with technology to make everything go smoothly during the day. And so I've had the honor of seeing our teachers in action, and, um, it's just, they're doing a phenomenal job in this incredibly difficult year. Um, so I have every confidence that if you remove that requirement, they will still do a phenomenal job. And I just hoped that our district would have that confidence in our teachers too. And I would ask that you please comply with the governor's order and allow employees, any employee who can do their work from home, to do their work from home. Um, show that you trust and support our staff by removing the order, or I'm sorry, removing the requirement, and ideally, as soon as possible. Um, things are bad, and they're not going to get better until people stay home, thanks.
Thank you, Kristen, uh, do we have others, Dr. Salerno? Okay, I have a written citizen comments from the Academy of Little Vikings 4K and Childcare, Brenda Fritz. On behalf of the families in Little participating in, uh, Mon, or, excuse me, Mount Morrover 4K, would like to express gratitude for the difficult decisions you have made this year. The opportunity to allow families to choose virtual or in-person 4K has been an excellent and outstanding decision because it provides choices. One thing I appreciate about the leadership in our district is we are always searching for choices, and what would be in the best interest for others by allowing choices that fits the needs of their family. The early childhood education and care field will be facing additional challenges caused by COVID-19 and its impact on children's mental health. Through collaboration, our centers are able to receive better access to services children and families may need as a result of our partnerships. Our director, Nicole, has been amazing to work with throughout this pandemic, her support and leadership has really helped the MH4K program grow, and we are grateful and thankful for the talent she shares with us. Thanks again for allowing our families to have choices, choices such as collaborative 4K and hybrid learning opportunities, gratefully, Brenda Fritz, Administrator, Academy of Little Vikings 4K and Childcare. Are there any other citizen comments? Are there any other citizen comments? All right, moving on then to the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D. Pardon me?
Employment transactions?
I don't know how to count tonight, uh, thank you, Jeff. Item four, personnel transactions, Dr. Salerno, I know there's one retired one.
Oh, there sure is, and it's a sad day for the Mount Morrover Area School District. Please allow us to extend our congratulations to Jeremy Kessnick. Jeremy is preparing to retire here at the end of the school year. And, uh, those of you who are familiar with what we try to do when we share some information about impending retirement is just to go back through the mists of time and look through personnel files and see some great things that really highlight the work of this professional. Among many, many athletes in his file include things like him being the recipient of the Cole Fellowship back in 2000. And, uh, at one point, even earning his National Board Certification in just, uh, in 2002. He achieved that national certification, which those of you who may not be familiar with, that is quite a feat. It takes great, great deal of work and definitely demonstrates the very best of the best when it comes to our professionals. And, uh, one of the other things we love about Jeremy is just his genuine love for teaching. Uh, for example, uh, he wants obtained moon rocks for students to, to look at in 1997. That was apparently a big highlight for students, and that was noted in his employee evaluation. Jeremy, you've been a wonderful treasure to this school district, and we hope the remaining couple of months that you have here in our district are as special as your first few. Uh, we're grateful for your service to our community, thank you.
Motion to approve, Jeff has moved, approval?
This is Jessica, second.
Jessica has seconded the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Now, from four to five, consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D. Diana, question? Jeff has a question.
Why is the CO2 football under consent agenda instead of action item?
Uh, Dr. Salerno, can you, uh?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, well, since, yeah, when we planned our meeting with the board president, we asked where to place that, and, uh, because it seemed like one that many people would be very supportive of and been part of our fabric as a school community now for years upon years, it seemed like a no-brainer. But certainly, if you would like to pull that in the consent agenda to make that an action item, that's not a problem at all either.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's always been the reaction item before.
Uh, not the last time, but yes, yeah, that's okay, we'd be happy to.
Would you like to go on, Jeff? We can go on separately.
Yeah.
All right, we'll take that up, uh, the action items. But the balance of the, uh, the items we can approve by consent, is there a motion to approve items A, B, and D? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second, Kimberly.
A motion to approve, Jeff has seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6A, committee member reports, community and legislative committee, uh, the community and legislative committee, Jessica.
Hello, um, we did not meet in the month of October, our next meeting is a week from today, so I don't have anything to report right now.
Advocacy committee, uh, Kimberly.
Thank you, well, we spent the first half of our November meeting with some special guests from the IC, Ms. Haugie, Ms. Lisca, and Ms. Erickson. These three professionals led committee members on a simulated morning meeting at the IC, could see what our virtual students experience and how our teachers are still building inclusive communities over screens. We get to share some laughs and picked up a few new instructional techniques, too. We also received updates on how staff are receiving professional development for their virtual learning experiences, as well as hearing from Nicole Teep with the next round of our 4K contracts that we'll see later this evening, that's all Rod.
All right, thank you, that's the committee reports for this evening. Item 6B, information advocacy report, updated on available state and local assessment information. Percent of students growing from their previous results and percent of students achieving comparison to grade level peers, Mrs. Straka.
Thank you, President Heiss. So this month's information advocacy report, as Rod said, is looking at our assessment data. But as you can probably guess, with the school closure back in the spring and virtual learning starting off the school year, we had to pivot a bit with the amount and type of assessments that we were providing to students. So with, with that being said, um, I'm going to give this report with a little different spin this time and talk more about what we've been doing for our assessments and not providing necessarily the data behind the assessments this time. So I, I broke down the report into our three sort of big cat, uh, grade level spans. So I just want to touch on each grade level span as we go, if you don't mind. So the first grade level span is elementary. And within the elementary time, we took the approach to use our local assessments and our district assessments um, portions as needed, so teachers could see the reading levels and the math levels for the students. So within my summary for the elementary, I shared examples like PALS. PALS is part of the, um, reading readiness state, um, assessment that we use. And we typically give a, a, a larger assessment, but teachers only needed certain portions of it in order to really judge students' reading levels in the fall. So we were able to pick and choose from that assessment to really drive their instruction so they could get to know their kiddos. Um, per state statute, we have to give the full PALS, um, assessment at some point this year. So we'll look to either fall, I'm sorry, to either winter or spring for that. Uh, we were also able to pull off other local assessments, specifically in math, um, that we could use. So students and teachers could, could sort of see where they were with their learning levels. Um, I moved to middle school and high school for now, so middle school and high school, uh, our staff have been using more their formative assessments, meaning exit slips and those types of assessments directly related to the content. So, um, because we know with virtual learning, we have less face-to-face time with kids at the secondary level. So again, we had to balance that instructional time with the amount of assessment time. Um, in, in looking at larger district assessments such as MAP or, um, the Scholastic Reading Inventory SRI at the middle school level, we're looking at those and bringing those in in future times in order to get that information we need when staff need it. And at the high school level, um, same thing there again, looking at those formative assessments where teachers can collect that data on their instruction, and if, and if kids are grasping the content, and then they'll adjust their instruction as they move on. The state assessments will still be going on, uh, so we have to be switching our gears in how we're going to be approaching those, and a good example is the ACT assessment. ACT this year in Wisconsin is going to be offered online or paper and pencil. And internally, we're having discussions right now with the high school team as to the best approach. Um, I'm also having conversations with my curriculum instruction counterparts in Dean County and, and all school districts are looking at right now, what are the pros and cons for doing the online administration versus that paper and pencil. And lastly, um, Brian Johnson maybe talked about this a bit in safety and wellness over the past couple of months, but we will be having the SABERS screener for grades four, six, seven, and nine. And that's a screener that looks at the social, emotional, and behavior risk survey for students. So we'll be actually, uh, fourth grade is actually doing that on Wednesday to start us off. And we'll be using that assessment data to guide instruction to support social, emotional, and mental supports for kiddos.
Great, thank you, Sarah, are there any questions or comments for Sarah?
This is Jessica, I have a couple of questions. Hi, Sarah, thank you, that was very helpful. Um, I have just a couple of, uh, kind of big picture context questions. Um, first related to the SABERS, I know that we've spoken about it before. Um, and you provided a link in your report to the sample questions, I think, for fourth graders, and I just wondered if the questions were the same as the kids got older uh, for the older grades, because I think you said it was going to also be administered in sixth, seventh, and ninth grade. And I just wondered if they had the same questions, and then we may have talked about this, and I apologize if I've forgotten. But who is going to respond to the, to the survey responses, you know, depending on the level of need for the students? So that's my one set of questions, and then my other question is related to the ACT. Um, what kind of, in general, prep do we provide our, um, students as they're preparing for the ACT? Or is it simply some sort of, you know, standalone prepare on your own kind of thing? So those are my questions, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, I don't know if Brian Johnson's on the call, I don't know if Brian wants to help out with the SABERS question. Uh, so Will Berry is, Brian?
I'm here.
Would you, would you want to take the, the first question from just ago?
Yeah, you bet, so, so the SABERS assessment is relatively the same, although the wording, um, that I saw is worded a little bit different. And then also when, and fourth graders take it, there's little icons that are kind of like cuter. Um, so they kind of click on each one, so it kind of gives some visual represented, representation when they take each question to kind of let them know, I fully agree or I don't, um, agree at all, to kind of go along with it. And that goes away as kids get older. Um, what our plan is, since we've never done it before, so this is, is going with the flow. Um, but what, so fourth grade, we're administering this week, Wednesday, um, for the first time. And then within just a few days later, we're meeting as a full student services team to talk about the data, because we'll get the results back almost instantly. Um, and then look through it, decide a plan, how are we going to address it, and then kind of move forward. We've talked with our student services teams within the entire district about helping support, so that's why we're doing one, um, building at a time, so that other, um, student services members from other buildings could come over and help support, if we're noticing really high numbers, we can kind of do an all-hands-on-deck approach. So, um, that's kind of how we're approaching it right now, but it is going to, um, lead for some change, depending on what results we get.
Thank you, Brian, that's helpful.
Thanks, Brian, and I'll answer the second question on the ACT piece. Uh, in the past, during stat time, uh, students have had opportunities to prep a bit for the ACT to understand some of the questions, and, uh, classroom teachers have also embedded some of those ACT-type questions within their curriculum in the past. Um, there have been ACT prep courses offered. Uh, I don't know if and when they will be offering those again, uh, but I'm guessing sometime soon. And then, uh, part of my talks with the high school administrative team about the online versus paper and pencil will be talking about how to provide those, um, ACT prep-like scenarios for all students. So we're going to be pacing that out as well as we meet up to that March time.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Sarah? All right, thanks very much, Sarah. We'll move on to item 6C, COVID-19 update, Dr. Salerno.
Well, good evening again, everyone, today was a day of transition. We launched our in-person and virtual K2 instructional program. Not to mention, our high school athletic practices began today for several sports. Now, as it relates to the K2 transition, there were only a few hiccups, all things considered. This really, in my mind, is a testament to our families, our K2 staff, a Herculean effort on their part. Principal Johnson, Dean Gennin, and all Observatory Services team members, everyone rolled up their sleeves and dug in. Principal Johnson, Dean Geninin, and all Observatory Services team members, everyone rolled up their sleeves and dug in. We're trying to hold open virtual slots for kids who contracted COVID and need to be out of class for a period longer than the quarantine. Every family who's requested to move from hybrid to virtual has had that honor. And while we, to the one point, and my heart breaks for the families that notified us of a change in their mind afterwards, not being able to kind of connect with their former teacher, I can appreciate the impact that has on our kids. And certainly, all things being considered, we would like to avoid it if at all possible. In the event that it lays any concerns at all, I thought it might be just helpful to talk a little bit about our ongoing communications with Public Health Madison in Dane County about our plan. We talk to them almost daily now. And public health, even with these burgeoning numbers that we've been seeing in the news, continues, continues to recommend the return of our K-2 students. Now, when I push back on public health and ask them to provide data to help us understand how this could possibly be, one of their data sets continually happens to be, in fact, in their mind, that 5% of confirmed cases in the school setting are from children. It's my understanding, maybe even this near is the national trend, according to Kristin Paul, who is the person we connect with. She said 95% of positive cases in Dane County are occurring in, excuse me, I should say, go back again, excuse me. 95% of positive cases in Dane County childcare settings or schools are the result of outside factors. Her words, not mine. Nationally and locally, we're not seeing case transmission among students, she told us. And that staff cases are mimicking the cases we're seeing in the community. These are quotes now. She continued, people are leaving Dane County and returning with cases of COVID. Any safer home requirement would not be enough to have an impact if it solely occurred in Dane County. In their estimation, they believe it would need to be statewide in order to have an impact. If you don't hear me say anything tonight on this call, folks, please hear me say this. All of this means that we as adults, we as adults must be vigilant about our own practices. The protocols established, followed with fidelity, will mitigate spread. We know that the governor did put out an order recently, I think it was last Thursday night, which he encouraged people to, and businesses, to permit working from home. And when we ask public health if that applies to schools, at this point, they continue to follow the line that working, having our kids return K-2 is still their recommended choice. We have seen several school districts successfully run their K-2 programs without interruption. SOC, Verona, Wanakee are good examples of that. But we do know that Public Health Madison Dane County is considering, and they're just doing that now, considering likely in the first part of December their metrics and what that might portend for us as it relates to a regular reorganization plan are yet to be determined. Of course, of course, the administration stands on the ready to make any adjustments that the board may have with regard to the 20-hour work provisions. Now, subs, subs are needed if we're going to have options when quarantine is called. Otherwise, we may have to implement cooling off periods, as I call them, like we've seen in other school districts around the region. And I, and for families, I know we're desperate when our kids get sick and we have work requirements. But please, please, please do not send your kids to school if they are sick. We want to do nothing that would ever put the safety of our students in our state at jeopardy. So thank you so much for your allowing me an opportunity to provide this update.
Questions or comments for Dr. Salerno?
This is Kimberly. I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, echoing some of the parent emails and comments that we've received this week, I really am very eager to revisit required work hours in our buildings on an upcoming agenda. And I appreciate hearing tonight if any of my colleagues feel that's worthwhile. I haven't wavered from feeling this requirement isn't necessary for staff who aren't meeting with students. And now I feel a responsibility to our community to take further action on this.
Dr. Salerno, I have a similar question. In your conversations with Public Health Madison Dane County, when they initially released their recommendations, they said it was safe for staff to be in the building, I believe. Have they changed that at all?
No, they have not. They indicate as long as we have the protocols that have been established and we train and we follow the protocols, we are, it's acceptable to have staff in buildings. And I know that speaks differently to what we read in the governor's order, order number 94. I've spent a lot of time on the calls with my fellow superintendents to find out what they're doing in their districts. We don't want to be an outlier. We also want to follow our local data. And certainly, the district is prepared to move in whatever direction is appropriate. Although it's not an item on our agenda tonight, it certainly could be something that we could put on a future agenda item if the entire board thought it appropriate to do so.
Thank you. One comment that I would make is, is that as Dr. Salerno said, the public health department is likely in mid-December to explore its metrics. And I think that will provide good timing for the board to sort of scratch its head about its own way forward in terms of returning, returning higher grades to school. So I'll look forward to a discussion amongst the board once we see what the new metrics are, if they are offered by the public health department, and what that might mean for our own timetable for, for returning kids in the higher grades to school. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to action items. Item seven A, consideration of 2021, 2022 MH4K contracts.
Thank you so much again, board members. The education committee, as they knew each November, puts a moment to look at the contracts of each of our partner sites. I think it goes without saying how grateful we are to half these partners in our, in our community. They continue to step up, and this year has been the latest example of really truly defining, epitomizing what partnership is all about. And we please ask for your thoughtful consideration of all 4K contracts. You see two examples in the board agenda. One that represents the contracts for CCS and one that represents Gotti, Marks &amp; Hands, and Little Vikings.
Motion to approve. Jeff has moved that these contracts be approved.
Second, Diana.
Second, Kimberly.
Diana has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? If not, then all of them in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the 2021, the 2022 MH4K contracts are approved. Item seven B, second reading of the anti-racism statements. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jessica and Kimberly for continuing to make the statement even better. So Jessica had given the recommendation at the last meeting to have what we mean when we say equity. And so brought the quote in from the National Equity Project on what educational equity means, which is that each child receives what they need to develop their full academic and social potential. And then Kimberly spruced up some of the wordage to make sure that it all flowed smoothly. The meaning didn't change in any of it. It just made it grammatically correct and thorough throughout the statement.
Motion to approve. This is Leah.
This is Jessica. I second.
Excuse me, we have a technical difficulty here. Leah has moved approval of the statement Jessica has seconded in the motion. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the anti-racism statement is approved. Item seven C, first reading, a return to work policy number 523.12.
Good evening, Sarah. Good evening, Sarah.
Hello. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Thanks for taking a look at this policy. This is a policy that was started actually before my time. And we've worked through it with the Personnel Committee in our last meeting and a couple other meetings as well. And what this policy does is really helps kind of tighten up a couple things around what's expected and how can we maybe work with individuals to get them back to work, maybe in a transitional state in terms of workers' compensation? So for example, if someone needs to be out, but maybe they need light duty or something, it does allow us to kind of look at and explore what possibilities there might be if there is the opportunity to, you know, help get that employee back doing some things, maybe in a part-time capacity or doing some things that might be a little bit different for a shorter term until they're able to really fully return into their job. And so it really focuses on something that's outside of regular FMLA and more on our workers' compensation scenarios that maybe FMLA wouldn't apply for.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Any questions, comments?
This is Leah. Motion to approve.
Leah has made a motion to approve. There a second?
This is Jessica. I second.
Jessica has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move to a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Danny is a yes. Diana?
Yes.
Diana is a yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff is a F, a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica's a yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes. And IMES. The yeses are seven, the nos are zero, and the policy passes. Item seven B, consideration of removal of policy 537.1, professional meetings. Sarah?
Yeah, that's me again. And this policy, we've actually looked at in the Personnel Committee and really looked to take that information and combine it into what is our 537 professional growth policy, which we'll bring to you at a future meeting. But really, as we were looking through both of those policies, we were recognizing that the professional staff meetings policy was something that we could fold up into what was relevant. We could fold up into our professional growth policy. So our recommendation was to consider removing the professional staff meeting policy and really bring it into our professional growth policy.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions? Motion to approve. Jeff has made a motion to approve the removal of the policy. Is there a second? I will second.
Second, Kimberly?
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all of them, oh, now we're going to go to roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica is a yes. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah's a yes. And IMES. The yeses are seven, the nos are zero, the motion carries, and removal of policy 537.1 is approved. Item seven E, pulled from the consent agenda, renewal of the football team co-op. Is, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Who was that?
It was Danny.
Danny? Was there?
Second, Diana.
Diana. Danny has moved and Diana has seconded that we renew our football team co-op. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 For this co-op, how many years does this one go for? Is it two again?
I believe so, yes. Twenty-one, excuse me, I changed that.
Three, twenty-two, twenty-four, right?
This is what I'm reading here.
Twenty-one.
Along the top here, yes, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. So three years, please.
Yeah, okay. And now this spring, we picked up last fall's schedule?
That's what we're hoping for if everything turns out well.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the co-op is renewed. Item eight A, citizen comments. Those wishing to speak should please text their first name and last name to 608-250-9166.
Good evening to Mrs. Burkis, Nancy Burkis? Hello, Mrs. Burkis, Nancy Burkis? Maybe I'm saying it night time wrong. Miss Nancy B-E-R-K-A-S, are you on the call?
Are there others?
No.
Has left the meeting. Single one's with ice cream. She had a meeting. Was that right?
Yeah.
Nope, doesn't look like she's on the meeting. Are there any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Hi, this is Kristin. Nancy Burkis says she was kicked out of the meeting, but can't get back in. Is she waiting maybe like on the join or something?
We don't have anybody who's trying to get into the meeting right now. I mean, we have plenty of seats open.
Can ask her to try again. We've only got 50 in the meeting, so it should be, should be plenty of room.
She just texted me what she wanted to say. Would it be okay if I read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. She said, her comment is regarding the requirement of teachers to work in-building 20 hours a week. I believe the teachers in the community deserves to hear the rationale for such a requirement. It smacks of not trusting your teachers to do their job without supervision. That was it.
Thank you, Kristin, for serving this intermediary. Are there other citizen comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to item nine, future agenda items. And if you have one, please let Dr. Salerno or me know. I think I know what one might be. Item, schedule next meeting.
Rod?
Yeah?
I was looking at the future agenda items, and for letter O, we're almost at the end of the year. So if we wanted to do an annual Friend of Education Award, probably best to get that in there soon. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item 10, schedule of next meetings, including the workshop that will take place on November 30th. Are there any questions about next meetings? I know sometimes time's going to be, going to be.
Just a friendly reminder, if you don't mind me mentioning, that the Education Committee and Safety and Wellness will be doing a joint meeting together, and that will get underway at. at 5:30 in the afternoon rather than our customer at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any, any other, any other discussion under scheduled next meetings? Then moving to item 11, closed session, contemplated closed session per section, 19.85, paragraph one, subparagraph F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration, specific personnel, problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where... Per, or mutation of many persons referred to in such histories, your data are involved in such problems or investigations. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve. Jeff has moved, we approved the motion to go to a closed session. Is there a second?
Second, Kimberly?
Kimberly has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Danny's a yes. Diana?
Yes.
Diana's a yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Jeff is a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Thank you, Jessica. Kimberly?
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes. Leah?
Yes.
Leah is a yes. I am a yes. The yeses are seven, the nos are zero. We are in closed session. We'll be back in five minutes. Do we have a, does everybody have a code?
Yes, except the people on the board on Friday. Can you please look at that?
New, new way to to the closed section. Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Casey. It's Steve Salerno. We just ended up closing up our meeting here.